And then you'll see this, it'll light up, just for the timer. Now, when it hits red, then that's the timer.
Okay.
It's called the Word, October 11th, 2021. We strive to protect our citizens, our people, and our country, which is standing as one nation under God, here in this world, liberty and justice for all. Moving right into our agenda, we have the announcement of our presentation for presentation tonight, so we'll move right on to the Finance Committee Report, and I'll turn it over to Finance Chairman John Wybuck for his committee report.
Good evening, everyone. Finance Committee met last week, and we recommended the following items for approval tonight: on the Consent Agenda, Item 7B; Braver Agenda, the Item 8, the Budget, which is on second reading tonight; Item 10, the request to approve the City of Fishers' GO bond, our first reading on that one; and that is all that we had to really discuss for our Budget and Finance Committee. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Moving on to the Department reports, during last month's council meeting, Councilmember Fair asked staff to provide the council with an update regarding the different point trail and the Health Department, which I consented to. The memos have been attached to the agenda and are available as a title link on the city's website, and the councils have had an opportunity to review those. I'm going to move on to the Consent Agenda. We have two items on tonight's Consent Agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second?
I have a motion by Pete, second by John. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Moving right along to Item Number 8, 092021, a request to approve the City of Fishers' Budget, 2022 budget. We have Elliot, Deputy Mayor Elliot Holgren, to explain just one thing.
Thank you. Good evening, Council. For the record again, Elliot Holgren, Deputy Mayor. Mayor Fattness, regardless, could not be here tonight as he's out of town working on a significant economic development opportunity. Nonetheless, I'm proud to be here before you on his behalf, this evening requesting to approve the city's Fishers' 22 budget. As you recall, the budget was presented by Mayor Fattness with a public hearing during last month's city council meeting. No changes have been made to the budget since that time. I would, however, like to take a moment to address one specific item in the budget, as there was a public comment submitted regarding it. There may be a few folks behind me here concerned about it, and that's the $300,000 line item for the Parks and Rec budget, set aside to invest in additional pickleball courts on the west side of Fishers. Some concerns have been raised about the exact proposed location of these courts. Currently, there is no formal agreement in place, and prior to construction, the city would undergo a process for identifying the final location, which would include seeking neighborhood input, of course, and various assessments to understand traffic, parking, and noise impacts. Approval of this budget, as related to this line item, simply allocates that money towards answering the demand signal of wanting additional pickleball courts in our community. So, long story short, additional work will follow the approval of this budget. That all being said, Mayor Fattness administration is proud of requesting approval of this balanced budget this evening. It's been discussed at five public meetings and a media briefing, continues to invest in our public safety with eight new firefighters and three new sworn police officers, continues to invest in our public infrastructure with a number of road and trail improvements, provides a number of quality of life investments for our residents who live, work, and play here in Fishers, and all while providing a decrease in our tax rate. Thank you for consideration.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the 2022 budget?
So moved.
Motion. Okay. I'll now open it up for discussion. Do we have any comments or questions from council members?
I do. Just a couple notes. And Elliot, will you do me a favor? I just want to state a few facts, and please correct me if I am stating this incorrectly. I just want to be precise about this. After tonight, if the vote is favorable, the budget gets approved, and this is our opportunity to just make sure everything's clear. So, just one fact I want to be precise about, for six years in a row, the City of Fishers has raised the property tax rate on residents, but this year, it'll be lowered slightly for 2022. But this doesn't necessarily mean that a citizen's property tax bill will go down because assessed value of homes have been increasing. So I just want to make that, make that plain, but the important point here is that the tax rate for 2022, as part of this budget, property tax rate is going down.
That's correct, and it's going down.
Okay, I just want to state that. And the other thing I want to state is that the budget proposes a 4% raise for every city employee, and I just want to be clear about this as well. That includes everyone on this side of, a side of the room, including elected officials, so I want to be transparent about that. I will also make one other comment about the funding for nonprofits, just to put a fine point on it. The budget, please correct me if I'm wrong, the budget has zeroed out, in the budget, the funding for nonprofit grants. However, it is anticipated that grant funding will come from the American Rescue Plan funds.
That's correct. We're using $250,000 of the ARP in the 22 budget to cover nonprofits. That's correct.
Perfect. So I just, thank you. I just wanted to state those things, since that was something that we started chatting about last month, too.
Do we have any other comments?
You know, I just make one, one question, kind of put it in real clear terms. I mean, let's, let's talk about this pickleball court on the west side. There's been some discussion about that, and we're not saying it's going to be at the location that's been proposed. It's going to be looked at for the west side somewhere.
That's absolutely correct.
And I guess the, the question I have for those residents that are nearby the proposed location, you know, how will they be, will they be notified, and will there be an opportunity for comment about that?
Absolutely. There'll be public input. We'll reach out to neighborhoods for, for comment. Absolutely. It'll be very public forum.
I just don't want to have the next day, they're having this show up near the, and they may not be in favor, or they may be for it. I don't know.
Right.
But I just want to make sure we have an open, honest discussion about that, wherever they may end up.
No, great point. Their voices will be heard.
Again, it's, it's something that's, maybe, folks may be very significant. So just trying to make, be clear about that.
Absolutely.
Um, as we move forward on this budget, so.
Thank you.
Just to, I know they need it on the west side, but we'll take four more over there in Sandy and Park.
We, we've heard the demand signal loud and clear. Yeah, thank you. Yeah.
The, the only comment I'll make, I, I wanted to thank Elliot, Lisa Bradford, and the financial team for working very hard and very tirelessly on this budget. They do an outstanding job for us. We, we're in a, a unique, very positive position from, from a financial perspective. You know, we have our, our financials audited by an independent CPA firm every year, and unqualified, and we win awards as, you know, as far as how we present things, the transparency we have. We've also had a significant number of meetings that, you know, this year, we actually added, having, you know, the department has as part of those meetings as well. So I want to thank everybody for a lot of hard work, a lot of effort. Elliot, thank you as very much for everything you've done, and the mayor as well in his absence. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Seeing no other comments, I'm going to close the discussion and call for a vote. All those in favor of the 2022 budget, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Moving on to Item Number 9, 092021A, a request to approve City of Fishers' 2022 salary ordinance. I'm going to turn it over to Deputy Mayor Elliot Holgren.
Thank you again. Yeah, the second item before you is a 2022 salary ordinance that accompanies the now approved budget. It's presented last month by our Human Resources Director, Ethan Lee, and no changes have been made since that presentation and public hearing. As a brief reminder, the salary ordinance changes reflect updated job duties and/or changes in the industry market standards.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
09.
I'll second.
Motion by Pete, second by John. I'll now open it up for discussion. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, I'll close the discussion and call for a vote. All those in favor of ordinance 092021A, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Moving on to Item Number 10, 101121, a request to approve the City of Fishers' 2021 GO bond. This is a first reading, and I'll turn it over to Lisa Bradford.
Thank you. For the record, Lisa Bradford, City Controller. The item before you is the first reading of our 2020 general obligation bond. As a reminder, this is a bond that was contemplated in the 2022 budget. It's a one-year bond, which means it'll be paid off in 2022. And what this bond will focus on is various road projects throughout the city, and in addition, this year, we're really focusing on some gaps in trail connectivity. So those are the two projects that you see listed, are particularly road projects and a trail connectivity.
Okay. Do I have a motion to give? Ordinance is 101121, first reading?
First reading.
Motion by Pete. Moving on, do I have any comments or questions on this from council?
Lisa, can you share with us, or maybe this is on down the line, more specifics about the trail and the road projects?
And that'll probably be on down, down the line as we work through. I know Jason's working on, Jason Taylor, Director of Engineering, is kind of working on what that plan looks like. I know we have a plan of where those gaps are in connectivity, but what those will be, will be discussed in more detail as he gets those kind of tightened up.
And that'll be for the, the next reading?
And we can probably discuss it. We'll discuss it at the next, we can talk about what projects those are.
Okay.
So just as a reminder, though, that road projects are exempt, so it can interchange, road projects can be interchanged.
Okay, sounds good. Thanks.
Okay. Moving on to Item Number 11, 101121A, an ordinance of the City of Fishers amending rates and charges for the use and services rendered by the City of Fishers Sewer Works. We'll turn it over to Chris Griesel.
Bear with me for one second. Just need the ordinance up.
I feel like the Wizard of Oz is back there or something.
Yeah, perfect, Tracy. And if you could scroll down, just a few pages to the first exhibit. One more. Perfect, right there. Thank you. Thanks, Elliot. Good evening, Council President Stoller, members of the council for the record. Chris Griesel, City Attorney. I'm here before you tonight to continue talking about our acquisition of HSC Utilities and the final step in that local process of conducting a rate ordinance. As the council is aware, the acquisition of HSC Utilities involves the acquisition of all tangible and intangible assets as it relates to the Fishers' service area. To date, the council has approved the acquisition and the financing to support, to complete the acquisition, which I'm grateful for. On Friday, I had our hearing before the Indiana Utility Regulatory Commission, where all parties, Fishers, Hamilton Southeastern Utilities, and the Office of the Utility Consumer Counselor, together just submitted a joint order for the IURC's consideration, and we're very hopeful that that order will come out before the end of the year. It was a very positive hearing before the Regulatory Commission. As part of the acquisition, the Fisher Sewer Utility is acquiring all current and former customers of HSC within the Fisher Service Area. So through Tracy's help, he put up the map that you can see for your reference. The shaded area in red is our current Fisher's Sewer Utility District, and in general, the rest of Fishers includes HSC's service district territory. As we committed to our residents and to the Indiana Utility Regulatory Commission, the city's not raising user rates to complete the acquisition. Instead, we're incorporating HSC's current tariff into our rate base. So if you're currently a customer of HSC Sewer Utility, after the acquisition, you will continue to pay the same rates and charges that you paid to HSC, but now to the Fisher Sewer Utility. And likewise, if you're currently a Fisher Sewer Utility rate payer, you're going to continue to pay the same rates and charges that you would formally have paid to our sewer district now, back to the city. One nuance to the service area, Tracy, if you could scroll down two pages for me here, one more. Thank you. One nuance to the service area is that part of the acquisition of HSC's service area, or what they considered the Fisher's service area in RCTA, includes a small portion of Noblesville, and that stretches from I-69 to 146th Street, and then from Oleo Road over to Atlantic Road. As this area is currently part of HSC's sewer district, it will be assessed with the same rates and charges as other HSC customers in Fishers. I anticipate bringing an interlocal agreement for the council's consideration next month concerning the provision of sewer service in this area, as the city and the city of Noblesville have been working extensively on this topic in partnership with one another. With respect to tonight's hearing, notice was given by publication. Additionally, we gave notice included in both our sewer bills and HSC sewer bills, and I want to thank Hamilton Southeastern Utilities for doing that. Additionally, residents in that Noblesville area receive specific notice in accordance with the state statute. The Sewage Works Act requires the council to establish just and equitable fees to maintain our sewer works in sound, physical, and financial condition necessary to render adequate and efficient service. So what does that mean? It means that the fees must be sufficient to pay all expenses which are incidental to the operation of our sewage works, which includes legal expenses, maintenance costs, operating costs, repairs, lease rentals, and interest charges on bonds and other obligations. It's required to provide for a sinking fund. We're also required to provide adequate money to be used as working capital and provide adequate money for improving and ultimately replacing the sewage works. Again, as we submitted to the Indiana Utility Regulatory Commission, the city is proposing to adopt two separate rate service areas, one of which is comprised of the old HSC Sewer District, and the other is comprised of the old Fisher Sewer Utility District. The city is adopting these current schedules without change to aid in the transition to our customers, allowing them to pay their same rates and charges after we close. Although we were merely just incorporating HSC's Sewer District into our rate base, the city did conduct a rate study, which was performed by Baker Tilly Municipal Advisors, which shows the existing rates to be sufficient to provide for the funding requirements that I mentioned before you, as outlined by the Sewage Works Act. Again, as we committed to the Indiana Utility Regulatory Commission, after completing this acquisition and after combining the utilities and gaining operational efficiencies, we believe we'll gain sufficient efficiencies by combining the two utilities. We'll look at, as a city, whether there's a need to blend the rates, whether there's a need for rate stabilization, and have that conversation with you at some point in the future. And with that, I'd ask the council now to open up the public hearing, and after that public hearing, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. I'm going to open the public hearing to any member of the public wishing to speak about this ordinance. The sewer works may come forward and address the council. Please state your name and address. For the record, you will be given three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Michael Colby, C-O-L-B-Y. I live at 7105 Coldike Drive, Fishers. I just had a couple of questions. First off, I, I heard there was going to be difference in rates between the existing Fishers community and the acquisition. What are those rates, just by chance? How much is one paying, and how much is the other paying? My second question is, and you kind of alluded to it, how long will those, I assume there's a difference, because in the past, there's always been a difference between what was, was collected off of HSC and us. Again, how long will that difference go on, and so will there eventually be a melding of that? I think you mentioned there probably would be a blending, as you call it. The other question I have was you mentioned, I don't recall the exact term, but it had to do with some sort of a fund that you would have to keep, keep set back for improvements and so forth. And I know in the past, when we annexed communities, the community was responsible for paying for the main lines going in. I know Indianapolis has a system in their sewers where they put, put funds aside so that the lateral lines are at least paid for by the, by the municipal company, and then, not the lateral, but the main lines. And then the homes, of course, had to pay for the laterals. So I wonder whether, whether that was going to be something that exists in the current setup with either the city or HSC, or if that's something that might be taken into account. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other members wishing to speak? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Chris, do you want to?
Sure. And, and thanks, Mike, for those questions. Always good to see you. As I did allude to, yes, there are two separate rates. So currently, our Fisher Sewer District pays $31 per equivalent dwelling unit, or per EDU, and that's been our residential rate for a few years now. Hamilton Southeastern District's residential rate is $39.75 per EDU. And so there is a difference of about $8 and change between the two districts. And what we've committed to both Indiana Utility Regulatory Commission and to the council is that we need to combine these utilities first. We need to see what operational efficiencies we can have. We're not going to shock the rate payers by the acquisition. And then, as we gain those efficiencies, to be in a better position to come back to you, to have a future rate hearing about potentially blending those rates. As it relates to the fund that you were alluding to, Mike, I think you were alluding to the availability fund that our sewer utility has, which pays for capital improvements. HSC Utilities also has an availability fund, which is part of this acquisition, which is separate and distinct from the sinking fund that I was referring to, which is more like a reserve fund provided in the statute. So there are funds available for capital infrastructure improvements. We'll continue to work with developers, and we'll continue to work with homeowners on their extensions and lateral connections.
Before moving on, do we have any mo, any comments or questions from the council?
Chris? Uh, this area up here, it doesn't, um, is that the effluent comes into our sewage district and plant?
The area north of Fishers is what you're referring to?
Yeah, north of 146 there, northeast corner.
Yeah, so there's, there's some topography there that makes it more advantageous for that flow to come to our utility. That's correct.
That's where Fishers City Line should have.
Yes. Yeah, maybe, perhaps. I'm not going to comment on that. But, but you're right, because of the topography, it was, and it's been recognized by our utility, by the way, even prior to this acquisition, where we were setting ourselves up in a position to treat the affluent in this area with HSC and had longstanding wholesale sewer agreements to do just that. So from a planning perspective, you should know that our sewer utility has long been planning and forecasting for this area outside of our municipal boundaries.
Um, just, just a, a comment, if I'm, I didn't want to interrupt. That kind of odd area between 141st, 146th Street, and just to kind of clarify that a little bit. It's Noblesville, yet if I recall back prior to the property tax caps, we kind of cut a deal with Noblesville, and if I'm not correct, where we took the residential and they took the commercial. And it's kind of, even though they have a Fisher's address, it's Noblesville that's collecting the revenue on the commercial properties from a tax perspective, but we take care of, HSC takes care of the treatment at this point, which will be us after that, correct?
That's correct. And then even within the asset purchase agreement, there is a small section of that area that you're talking about, that HSC Utilities is retaining, and that's the commercial that's along Moody Drive, and I can provide further detail for you guys at the next council meeting. We will continue to treat that, but HSC has excluded that from the purchase agreement, so that they will continue to have facilities in that area.
And there's no other areas outside of that that we're acquiring, just pretty much?
Just the Fisher Service Area, and their former CTA, which happened to include a small area outside of Fishers.
Thank you.
I'll give you the first reading. Yep, real quick. Sorry. I'm sorry, David. You beat me to it. Um, as far as the rates, I just want to make it clear, the way I've always viewed the rates is you have a rate on the red, the red in the map, which is the current Fishers' location.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, Tracy. Uh, you've got that red area, that's $31. And then we go into the white area, it's technically $31, but HSC Utilities has certain fees and other things that they have internal, that, that is the difference in the rate. It's not something that happened different on one side versus the other. And I only point that out just because the, the rate payers in the red are used to having a certain amount, and it just, I'm always cautious when I hear blending and things like that, because if you blend, one might be happy, one might be sad. So the people in the red have been used to that rate for years and years and years.
Yeah.
And an acquisition, it, it should remain the same. So we'll see how that goes for future councils when that comes up.
Yeah, I think that's a fair point, Councilman George. The, the other benefit that we all have in acquiring this utility is the transparency in front of the city council, right? So anytime that we request a rate increase or an adjustment to the rate, it's coming before you, you're going to know what that is. It's not going to be a process that takes place at the Indiana Utility Regulatory Commission, but yet, right in front of the council. So to the extent you're not aware exactly how those fees are made up in the other district, you will be very aware of how they're made up on a going-forward basis.
Okay, first read.
Thank you.
Moving on. Item Number 12, 101121B, an ordinance of the City of Fishers amending chapters of the ordinances. I'm going to turn it over to Lisa Bradford.
Thank you. For the record, Lisa Bradford, City Controller. The item before you for first reading is an amendment to various fees for, across our departments. I'll kind of walk through those rather quickly, but as a brief overview, a lot of our fees have not been updated in many years. Predominantly, a lot of them have not been updated since at least 2011. So the fees that are up for changing are, for example, EMS fees. Their last fee increase was in 2011. The fee increase relates to basic life support, advanced life support, and another form of advanced life support. And basically, this fee increase will put the city in the middle of comparable cities such as Indianapolis, Carmel, Noblesville, and Westfield. And going forward, the plan internally is to try and review these fees every two years or so, so that we don't come back with, you know, a fee that hasn't been updated in five, 10 years. Planning and zoning has increased their fees to align more with neighboring communities. And so there are some changes related to additional fees for developments within PUDs, which, as Megan had noted when she did this, they require a lot more additional staff time as part of the review process, so those have a slightly increased fee. While the Health Department, as you know, is relatively new, the fees, proposed fee changes are not to anything related to vital records, so those fees that were adopted will still stay the same for vital records. There are some slight changes to pool fees and some related to food permits for retail food market establishments, which again, will put the city kind of in the middle of comparable areas. Public Works, uh, excuse me, has some small fees that they charge for special events, and they're just bringing those more in line with some current market rates. And again, plan is for them to look at those every two years as we move forward. And then Engineering is proposing new fees also. Engineering as a whole has not increased their fee since 2009. One of the things that we did talk about, we did talk about this in Finance Committee for a bit, it's extremely difficult to compare engineering fees across cities because of how fees are allocated and how fees are broken down or what's included. So Engineering Department is going with kind of a flat 10% increase related to their fees. And basically, the hope is that this avoids over-correcting the fee issue, but starting to get more in line with what it should be, since not being increased since 2009. Do you have any questions? I'll be happy to answer.
Do I have a motion to give this ordinance first reading?
First reading.
Before moving on, do you have any comments or questions?
Lisa, is there, what's the easiest way that we could review the current fees? So what we have in front of us are the proposed.
Proposed fees. There are, I believe the ordinance, the, I looked at the original ordinance, we have our original Code of Ordinance section, I believe.
Yeah, what we can do is probably provide a red line before next reading so you can see them compared against every ordinance.
Yeah, thank you. Sounds good, thanks.
Okay, moving on to item number 13, 101121C, an ordinance of the Common Council for the City of Fishers amending Chapter 30 of the City of Fishers Code or ordinances, council committees. I'm now going to turn it over to Chris Greisel.
Thank you, Council President and Stolar, members of the council for the record, Chris Greisel, City Attorney. I'll make my comments rather short and sweet before turning them back over to the subcommittee. Before you, as a first draft of legislation that establishes a formal standing committee process and deals with various appointments to boards and commissions, I can tell you from just a legal perspective, my concern going into this conversation was simply the lack of kind of a formalized structure for our standing committees here at council. And I've discussed that with the subcommittee, and I think that this draft begins to address that, both from the perspective of how matters get flowed to the subcommittee and then how they get flowed back to the council for their further consideration in the process in between. So with that, I'll turn it back over to President Stolar and members of the committee for any comments. Thank you.
Okay, first thing I'm going to do is I'm going to call for a motion for first reading, and then we'll have comments and questions.
I'll make a motion for first reading.
Thank you. So before moving on, I want to open this up for comments and questions. Do we have any comments or questions regarding this?
Yes, I have a comment. So as a member of the committee task force, this recommendation does not speak to me and it does not speak for me. I still hope for some revisions because I do see one area for improvement and a glaring problem with the recommendation that has been brought forth. I'm really happy that there is guaranteed representation of the minority party on all of these committees because this is an expected practice for a bipartisan legislative body. However, as I shared now twice, this gives a new unchecked authority for the council president to appoint members and folks. What I think would be a better solution to this would be to have an open council vote to the public, or something along those lines for the selection process, because I think that for one, it allows for better transparency, but yet, for some reason, this was deemed not to be a good idea, but this disappoints me greatly because, first of all, this allows for more transparency with the voting, and two, this current recommendation also decreases our ability for diversity and diversity of thought. And diversity is important to Fishers because we're a growing city. And I know that before becoming a city councillor, when I applied on these boards and commissions, along with other members of the Latinx community, we heard nothing. So for that reason, I do believe that there is still room for revisions, and I do hope that we can still make some improvements to this.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments or questions?
Yes. President Stolar, you are, you're the chair of this task force, right?
Yes.
So I'll direct my question to you, but I know that there are other task force members here. Could you just kind of walk us through the rationale? I was very surprised by this draft because I thought this was to codify our current process, and it's definitely very different, as Counselor Newman mentioned. Can you kind of walk us through the, like, why is the task force recommending what we see here in front of us?
One of the things that we went and we looked at, we looked at operating, standard operating procedures for legislative bodies. We looked at Indianapolis, Bloomington, Fort Wayne, Carmel, numerous other legislative bodies. When we looked at those, the proposal that we made falls very much in line with the standard operating procedures for other legislative bodies. It also follows what is in line with state legislatures, national legislatures. So we felt that this would be a good form, given that the standard operating procedures have been proven across the country.
So how does this pertain to Fishers? I mean, I hear what you're saying about there are cities that have provided a model of language that we see in front of us. I can find many other cities that don't. So what I'm asking is just simply, this draft in front of us, how does it serve Fishers? Why is this good for Fishers?
I believe that it's good for Fishers because it is tried and proven. When I looked at other communities that had various, most of them were smaller communities, they were not as sophisticated as what I would consider Fishers, Indianapolis, Carmel communities, they were smaller, some of them were farming communities. And I think that this moves us forward and helps us with our operating procedures for this type of city that we have. So I think this was the best.
Okay. I'll just respond quickly with, oh, I'll just speak from the heart here. Many months ago, I shared with the council, my concern about, my concern at that point was about citizen appointments from this body to boards and commissions. My concern was twofold and was proven. One was a lack of transparency, and the second, a lack of thoughtfulness of representation of the diversity of our community. It seems to me that what I see in front of me does not address either of those two issues. So my question at this point is, either the task force did not find those concerns to be something to address, or you feel that this draft does indeed address those concerns? May I ask which one?
I feel that this does address those concerns, simply because councillors can go, any councillor. You can go to the president, ask for people, say, hey, I have this person that I would like to get them on this committee. The president may have several councillors that are recommending people. I know myself, as I'm going to promote the diversity within the community, I feel that we are a very diverse community, and that we do need that representation, and that representation should be moved forward. I feel confident by any president of the council.
This draft in front of us does worsen transparency because it eliminates the city council being able to review and take a public vote for the appointments to boards and commissions, and what is proposed here keeps it behind closed doors and gives it as the responsibility of one person. So I feel very strongly this is not at all helpful to our community. It does nothing for transparency, does nothing for encouraging our citizens to want to participate. And I very strongly feel that if the rationale here is that other cities do something like this, we are not serving our community well if we are just following other cities' leads. We can do better than this. So I understand that we are taking a first reading right now. What I see in front of me does not at all address transparency or diversity, which is what our city deserves.
I'm going to go ahead and make a quick comment, and this may seem as a shocker, but I'm actually in agreement with my councilperson on the far left to me, and this is unnecessary. It's more government, it gets in the way. We are a top city in the country for as long as I've sat on council. We have been given accolades by virtually every major publication out there. We have run our city, we're a AAA bond-rated company, we have minorities and have had minorities on all of our boards and commissions, and every single vote we've taken has been in public, for every single board and commission we've done, everyone. There hasn't been anybody who hasn't applied, who really has put an effort to apply and to talk to those folks who get onto it, which is the mayor puts them on there, the council puts them on there, and the commissioners of Hamlin County put people on our boards and commissions. Those people who reach out to those, we're all public figures, you can find them. This is an unnecessary step. I find it to be complete overreach, and I just think it should be completely wiped out and tabled forever, because there's no reason to stop what's working now and try to insert something that is just nonsensical from the very start.
I also want to point out that we happen to have two Latinas on the city council. I happen to be Latina, and those people that know me know that whether you're a Republican or Democrat, I've always been a mentor to people that want to run for office regardless of what party affiliation they are, and encourage them to get involved, and I always shepherd them to the right people to step up, to be part of the leadership of our city and, you know, I am confident that as we move forward, that we're going to be looking for the best people to serve in those positions, you know, people that provide diversity but also are qualified, and I really do feel confident in the process. And any one of us can always make recommendations, provide resumes, I mean, that's just how it's worked, and I feel like this is a good process.
I guess for me, I'm somewhere in between Jocelyn and Pete, so Jocelyn put a fine point on it. I think what you're saying is in 30.12, where it says at the very end, I think the process is okay, where it goes through and it works from a bigger, these are the people that I'd like to be considered, things like that, and then it gets to the fine point of it is voted on. That's the change, basically, in the second to the last sentence.
This eliminates a city council vote on city council appointments.
My point is, it would, you're, what you're saying is that second to the last sentence would change to that.
Yes, it should, which reverts back to how we operated as a council. Yes, exactly.
And I'd be okay with that, just because, I mean, for my long time here, that's what we've done. I don't mind the filtering, I don't mind codifying what we do, but at the end of the day, taking a vote, it's a vote, everybody can see it.
Exactly. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
I just felt like it was important for us to have the first reading, not kill it here, because I believe that would kill the discussion.
Yeah.
And I think that these discussions, while we are polarized as people sometimes, and you can see even on the council, we'll have different varying views, and that's healthy in a community. If we all think the exact same, we are doomed. The different thoughts, different ideas are very important to every community in this nation. That's what founded this nation, that is the fabric of our nation. And so I don't believe in killing this thing right now. There's things, as I read it, I go, I agree, I disagree, there's different stuff, I'm going to agree and disagree with my fellow councilmembers, whether Democrat or Republican, and I'm going to have my own voice. But at the same time, I do believe that the minority party needs to have a voice in committees because that's fair, right? So I believe, I think we all pretty much agree with that. However, you know, to Pete's point, you know, we also think, you know, what hasn't been broken in our minds doesn't need to be fixed because we've had a tremendous community. We just got to make sure we continue to fight to have a tremendous community and stand for each person, what you believe in, what we believe in, what our values, what our core beliefs are. And so I think this is, while this is uncomfortable, it's important. While it may not feel good, and it's not a unanimous thing right now, that's okay. And so that's why I say, let's have a first reading, let's continue this dialogue, and let's make sure we perfect it.
Yeah, the only thing, I'll just continue the conversation, and whatever we come up with ultimately we'll all vote for or vote against, depending on how we feel about it.
I would, thank you. I would recommend the task force as a next step. A positive next step is the task force meet again in person and have full discussions about this and see if we can come to a really good solution.
Okay, I'm moving on to item number 14.
Can I make a recommendation, Madam President? Item 14 to 15, I don't know that we necessarily need a staff report on, they're both, you know, voluntary annexations.
Mm-hmm.
And as long as no one is in disagreement with that on my council, that they need to have that, I'm going to make a motion to approve item 14.
I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor, say aye.
They're voluntary annexations, Jocelyn, that.
No, it's a fiscal plan.
Fiscal plan's the same thing as a voluntary annexation, just one step in the process, it's just another legislative deal.
I'm aware.
So item 14 is the fiscal plan for the Covat-Thorp Creek annexation. Item 15 is then the final reading of the annexation. Council had the public hearing during its last council meeting, just for everybody in the audience.
Just one of the steps in a voluntary annexation that got through. The same thing happens every time we do a voluntary annexation.
Yeah, if you don't, if we have a few moments, can we handle that, I'm sorry, number 14, and not skip over it?
Sure.
Please. Thank you.
Luckily, I do have a presentation slide prepared, just in case. So I'll have Tracy switch over to the presentation. So item number 14, as mentioned, is the request to approve the fiscal plan for the Covat-Thorp Creek annexation. Those parcels are identified here, and this did go through a rezone for a new residential development a couple of months ago, a couple of months ago, so you guys saw that before you, I believe, in August. And so this is just for the annexation of those two lots. I'm here to answer any questions that you guys have.
Okay. I was going to say, I have a motion on the floor.
Second.
Second. I'll now call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Do I have a motion for item number 15?
So moved.
092021C.
Second.
I have a motion, and I have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Moving on to item number 16, 081621A, an ordinance amending Chapter 96. We have Elliot Holgren to explain this.
Yeah, good evening. Again, I'm standing in for Sarah Sanquist now, for the record, Elliot Holgren, Deputy Mayor. This item was introduced during the September city council meeting. No changes have been made since that time. This item was then taken to the planning commission on October 6, and was approved unanimously 7-2-0 at that time. Just by way of quick reminder, fees for park impact fees are updated every five years. Last time the City of Fishers did that was in 2016. The new proposed fees are $3,492 for single-family and $2,096 for multifamily. New calculations are based on a 10-year planning horizon, considers current, future population, trends and benchmarks both locally and nationally, on appropriate levels of service, and the percent build-out remaining here in the City of Fishers. These fees are and will be used toward park amenities. Appreciate your consideration.
Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
A motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Todd. I'll now open it up for discussion. Any comments or questions from the council members?
When is that going to affect?
Six months after you guys vote on it. Correct.
And if the subdivision's in process on Friday and goes to effect on Monday, they have to pay the new impact fee on Monday.
It's when the permit gets pulled, Brad.
Yeah, thank you.
After the ordinance is in effect, it'll be when the permit gets pulled.
Right.
That's, yeah, permit date.
So it has nothing to do with the status of the subdivision?
Correct.
It has to do with the date that was passed and the six-month added to that vote.
I'll now call for a vote. All those in favor of approving ordinance 081621A, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Moving on to item number 17, 101121D, consideration of a text amendment to the Kincaid PUD. We have Megan to explain this.
Yes, this item is for first reading for a text amendment to the Kincaid PUD for a new development project called the High Line at Delaware Park. So the concept plan is shown here, and this includes 280 multifamily residential units, 18,600 square feet of first-floor restaurant, commercial, and retail space, and then 4,800 square feet of standalone restaurant. I am going to turn it over to Steve Harden with Vega Drinker to provide a more in-depth overview of this project.
Good evening.
Good evening, members of the city council. For the record, my name's Steve Harden, resident here in Fishers, and a partner in the law firm of Fager Drinker. With me this evening from Envoy 106 Fishers LLC is Mr. Scott Baldwin. We're very excited to be here in front of you tonight. We were here back in August for approval of the economic development agreement. We've talked a lot at length about the purpose of the development in, Megan, do you have the aerial also? Where's Megan? Is the aerial on here, or just the concept plan? Okay. So when we've talked before about the economic development project, this is a 119-acre Delaware Park development that was approved about 25 years ago, back when we wanted to have all of the offices in one area, the restaurants in another, the residential in a third, and they should never get anywhere close to them. What we've seen over the last two decades is a growing interest in companies, when they're looking to relocate to a city or town, they're asking the question, where will my employees live? How can they get to work? Can they walk? Can they bike? Where would they go for breakfast in the morning, lunch, dinner in the evening? I definitely didn't do that, did I? I think someone was trying to help me by putting the whole aerial up. Thank you, we'll go back to the concept plan. So we've been working with the city for quite some time on how to reimagine and reinvent this development, to be able to provide that mixed use. And so part of our project, in our development agreement with the city, will be installing the 1.5-mile loop trail. We'll be also planning to be able to create bike paths. The streets were designed back in the day, really much wider than you ever need, so we have the room to be able to put bike paths on both sides of Kincaid and Sunlight, to be able to allow people to be able to live here, and then be able to walk or bike to work, as well as be able to recreate throughout, you know, the area as well. So this is really just the next step along the lines of our development agreement. The, do you have the architecture? Where's Megan? The architecture's on here? No? Okay. You have in your packet. It's the same architecture we showed before, it's a first-class market rate development. We do have included a number of things that we talked about during the development agreement. We have, all of the units will be complying with the Fair Housing Act, and we'll also have something different that we've not talked about before, that I have with Councilwoman Kobel, is that every unit, 100% of the units will also be adaptable. So instead of picking one or two of the units that, you know, if you have a disability, you have to pick that unit, they'll all be able to have, they'll have reinforced walls, if you need to put grab bars or anything like that, every unit will be able to be picked. So if you're in a wheelchair and you want to live on the fourth floor with a great view, you can do that. These are four stories with elevators, so this will be with tuck-under garages as well for the tenants. And then we've also incorporated, in talking with Councilwoman Newman, even before the development agreement, we've got a number of sustainability standards in here as well, you might have noticed that. We are big believers, we think sustainability is important, we also think it's good business, we think people are looking for that in communities. So we're real excited about the things that we're committing to in here, in addition to the EV charging stations, we'll have all LED lights, we'll have light sensing, occupancy sensing lights in the common areas, we'll be incorporating drought-tolerant plant species in the landscaping plans, and also a community garden. There's a couple of other things that we're not sure exactly how we would incorporate them, that we're still looking at, particularly how to charge those EV charging stations with solar or something along those lines. So we're real excited about the next steps in the process, and we're happy to answer any questions that you have for us tonight on first reading. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions by council?
I'm going to make a motion to approve, and then we can take questions or comments.
Okay. Motion to approve. Do I have a second?
It's first reading.
It's first reading.
You didn't say first reading.
Sorry, I missed that.
Messed me up. I'm like, follow my list.
I do have a quick question, may I?
Okay, yeah.
Steve, can you share with us if any outreach to neighbors in the area have been performed yet, or is that planned? I have received feedback from neighbors in Pine Bluff, Overlook, and Lantern Pines that cross my desk, and I know that the public hearing will be held at Plan Commission coming up. Can you tell us a little bit about any outreach that has been performed to the neighbors?
Yeah, so what we normally do is, when we send out, we're planning, I think, the public notice goes out later this week for the hearing.
Right.
And we invite people then to a neighbor meeting in advance of that. So those letters are going out this week, we get the list of who they go to, and I believe we have a plan for the neighbor meeting, onsite actually, so people can see it, visualize it, I think it's the 21st of October. We did, we were, the city did have a couple of board members from one of the nearby neighborhoods that reached out that they were interested in learning more about it, and Scott Baldwin and I met with them probably two or three weeks ago, and gave them a full detailed presentation, and it seemed like it went very well.
For that one neighborhood?
Yes.
Right, okay.
Yeah. So we, if you have somebody that's, maybe, I don't know whether the neighborhood you were describing is going to be noticed or not, if you have names of somebody, and they want to reach out to us, or feel free to, you know, send them my way, we'd be happy to meet with them.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I do appreciate that.
Sure, thank you.
I just wanted to thank you and applaud you for your sustainability efforts, as well as being open for other additional implementations.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to move on to item number 18, 101121E, a consideration of a rezone of 24 acres.
Hi, so for this next item, we don't have a staff presentation prepared, but I will turn it over to Steve Harden and the petitioner to provide a brief overview and provide their recommendation.
Hello, everybody. Hello, everyone. I'd like to introduce Sandy Avery to you, with Mel Canto, Sandy has a request to make.
First off, I want to thank all of you for allowing me to be here. We began this journey in December of 2020. We found this phenomenal piece of land, and we just thought the world of it, and we want to come to Fishers, and we knew it would take a little bit longer because of the pandemic, and we were prepared for that, and the landowner that was selling us the land was prepared for that, and so we began this journey together. In June, we were fortunate to meet Councilman DeRimer, and we began speaking with him, and he encouraged us to speak with all of you. And so as we've gone through and spoken to all of you, we have listened, we have heard your concerns, we have heard your suggestions, and we've tried to implement as many of those as possible. We heard you, many of you, in September, when you said, please don't apply in September, please come in October. We need to wrap our arms around this and study a little bit more, and so we waited. And now we hear from the council, and from Councilman DeRimer, that you would like for us to delay a little bit more, so that we can collaborate and work together to achieve a holistic, comprehensive plan for the councilman's district. And so one of the things that we told Councilman DeRimer when we first met with him, is that we would listen, and I think we have, and we told him that we would be good neighbors. And so it is in the spirit of being a good neighbor, that we would like to withdraw our application from this meeting, and we would like to defer until the November meeting, and spend a few more weeks working with you, to hopefully come up with a really great, phenomenal plan for the city of Fishers, and for the councilman's district. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate the call out, operation, and allowing us time to plan that area. We just want to make sure it's what's best for not only the developers, but our residents and our citizens, and we greatly appreciate it, and we look forward to working with you.
We'll see you soon.
I just want to make one, can I make a comment real quick? Brad, you?
Just like, I'd like to make a further comment. I've worked with Sandy now every day for the last two weeks, and I just want to commend her for her professionalism, lack of emotion, and the sincere effort to be a good representative coming into Fishers with her product. And I think, based on the relationship that I've established with her, we want her and her company in the Fishers. So I thank you very much, Sandy, for what you've done.
Yeah, I just want to say, they're fantastic people. I think the key for me, when we had our discussions, was not so much the project itself, like I shared, but what is our vision as a community for that corridor, that northeast side, or Brad's district, and just what's the long-term vision? Because it's really the last area in Fishers that's not under development, or, you know, in the process of a master plan, and so we want to make sure, at least I can speak for me, that I don't want to set timetables, right, like we're saying, next month, or I just want to make sure that we've had a comprehensive conversation, so we're right by them, because I know this is taking time, money, and effort from you guys as well. So I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page with that. Thank you.
Okay.
Just another quick comment. Yeah, also, I just appreciate everybody's patience and working together, because sometimes some of this takes time, and some of these examples that we've had where it's taken more time are like the Crew Car Wash, corporate headquarters and their new state-of-the-art car wash there, and the Great Eagle Development there. I mean, those things took a little bit of time, but I think at the very end, it became even a much better project, and both parties were extremely happy, and it was very embraced by the community, so thank you.
What is the next step to develop the vision for the plan? Like, she's asking for us to have some vision, to provide some good feedback, so that we can collaborate. What is exactly the next step?
We're putting, we're attempting to put together a meeting with the Britain Falls people, and the developers that are interested in that area. So right now, emails are flying back and forth with some dates, because these are out-of-state people, in-state, to come up with a date that they can all be there. Their first date was Friday. I golf on Friday, so we got to look for another date.
Okay, moving on to item number 19, 101121F, a consideration of a rezone of 15 acres. We have Megan to explain this.
Yes, so this is for first reading, again, for a new PUD ordinance called the Lehman PUD. It is for a residential development, maximum of 35 lots. The concept plan is shown here with some architectural elevations that would be incorporated into the PUD. The underlying zoning district would follow the R5 residential standards, and so shown here is just a table of those, that comparison. Any of the texts highlighted in blue would deviate from what the R5 currently allows, so I just show that for your comparison. And then I will turn it over to Pulte to provide an overview of their development.
Rex Ramage with Pulte Homes. I'm going to wait for Megan here, I think she's going to try to put up the presentation packet that was linked to the agenda. Again, Rex Ramage, Pulte Homes, offices 11590 North Meridian Street. Here, proposing a rezone for a project that's about 15 acres in size. Properties, you can see it on the screen there, is about a half a mile, or just under a half a mile east of Allisonville Road, located on the south side of 126th Street. Kind of see it in proximity with the Sunbless Farms neighborhood, which is to the east, west, and south, and then of course, the large Holland Park neighborhood there. As we continue to walk through the packet, if possible, and we can go down.
Excuse me, it's kind of hard to hear you. It's kind of hard to hear you.
How about that? Is that better?
Thank you.
Okay, sorry. I'll try to, try to bend down a little bit, too. So again, 15-acre site, 126th and Allisonville Road. So as we continue down to the concept plan, what you see before you is a proposal for 32 home sites, and these homes would be ranch in style, they would have the ability to have a potential loft for some additional square footage, but not a full two-story. So there would be 32 home sites for empty nesters. We believe this is a great location, just because it's more of an infill project in this part of the city, but then there's also been some recent success a few years back with the Reserve at Lantern, which is on the north side of the street, just east of us. So kind of a challenging site. It's about 400 feet in width, and just about 1,600 feet in depth, so it really doesn't lend itself to a lot of creative, you know, ability, but we've tried to do our best with placing the pond in a location that's kind of more at the forefront of the project. Also, in the southeast corner, as you might have seen in your packets, there's an area where there are no lots. We would propose that area to be kind of a pollinator garden, or kind of a reforestation area, to kind of employ a sustainability aspect to the project. So if we could go down to maybe the homes, the elevations, please? So again, here's some of the proposed elevations that you see. Some of them are going to have a third-car garage embedded into the footprint, others may not. You typically see these homes ranging anywhere from 1,600 to about 2,800 square feet, and that's base square footage. If you would add the loft space, or any type of rear facade extension, a sunroom, breakfast nook, other things like that, that square footage would obviously increase. We're expecting these homes to sell anywhere from about $400,000 to about $500,000, that's our current estimate as of today, and we're here for you this evening to have first reading. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any comments or questions from council?
Yeah, is that the one, the model or spec home that you built in Britain Falls on Rome Trail?
None of these homes would be exactly the ones that are in Britain Falls. They are kind of a newer, refreshed series of, similar to Britain Falls, yes.
Okay. The, once again, the problem I have had for six years, we have a zoning ordinance for residential, ER, R1, 2, 3, 4, and 5. We keep allowing developers to come in with PUDs. The planning department has admitted, there's so many PUDs, they can't monitor them, so the developers do what they want. There's no reason why they can't pick an R. This is close to an R5. All the surrounding area around there to the east and west is an R3, and you're going to make it less than an R5. The side setbacks should be 10-foot side setbacks, and the rear should be a minimum of 25. We have 20, like they're proposing here in Britain Falls, and for two years, 50% of the BZA filings were Britain Falls, because you couldn't even add a patio onto your backyard without coming to a BZA. So a minimum of 25, so that you can at least add on a patio or a gazebo to the rear of your house, 10-feet side setbacks, so we don't have the problems that we're having in Britain Falls with drainage and mold in the side of the houses. So I'm against this, and I think we need to stick with our zoning ordinance that we have. Thank you.
I do have a question about this. One of the things that I have concerns about with it going in, and we can discuss this at Plan Commission, is the drainage onto the other properties. As you develop this, your impervious surface obviously is increasing dramatically. How will that drainage be addressed, so that way the other neighbors are not affected?
Sure. And I think those two things tie together, so if there's any other comments, I'm happy to have that, but I'd love to address both of those, if you wouldn't mind.
I had a couple of comments on just, like, what your rear elevations were going to look like, if you could provide what those would look like. And also, since it is an empty nester project, I know, you know, I am a believer of trying to help the homeowners out with having adaptive, an ability to adapt the bathrooms with handlebars, you know, with bar grabs and things like that, so that as life changes, and they maybe decide to retire there, that it is able to be accessible, you know, and it looks like the entryways are accessible, but with regard to like, the restroom, you know, bathrooms and entryways and whatnot, and grab bars, so that it could be easily put in. Thanks.
I'll give it a first reading.
I do have one question, maybe more for Chris than for the petitioner. Is this unincorporated Delaware that we have to annex?
I think it is. It has to be annexed, then, John.
Yeah, just clarifying. Thank you.
I admit, if I could, I'll just go reverse order. So similar to what you heard Mr. Harden say about some of the apartment complexes, or the apartment units, we would have a variety of options that homeowners could potentially, you know, pick for their future life in this home. So whether that would be a zero entry to a shower, so there's no step, no curb to trip over in and out, and then of course, the handlebars or the hand grab bars. We do use reinforced blocking in the walls to be able to support those needs, so we would have a variety of options available to buyers to be able to select them. And then kind of with respect to, you know, the lots and the depth and all of that, so appreciate Mr. DeRimer's comments. You know, we've learned a lot of things since Britain Falls was way back in the day, so these lots specifically are 140 feet deep. That's about 15, 10 to 15 feet deeper than the traditional lot that you might see today. In addition to that, there is a significant, relatively significant area of common area before you hit the very dark outer grade, and I don't know if we could switch up to the concept plan, that would be terrific, please.
I think it's the other way.
There's, yeah. Thank you so much. So behind the lots themselves, there's a row of common area, and then along the property line, we wanted to make sure we preserve the tree line that's existing there, both for the neighbors, what they might see into the development, and then of course, for our future homebuyers looking out. So we do have a lot more space to work with, with respect. So, we do have a lot more space to work with, with respect to some of the drainage concerns that this council has heard recently. And then, with respect to coming back to the BZA for, for decks or impervious surface, stormwater runoff, things of that nature. So, I was working with the planning department, and we feel we've come with a, to a really good number of that impervious surface that would not require the homes to come back. We've done kind of some preliminary calculations there, so we believe we've tackled that issue. And then, with respect to the drainage, you know, there's a couple of different places where the water wants to go today. In the middle of the site, kind of on the western property line, there's an area that I think that gets a little more wet there than usual than the rest of the farm field. But, because of the design, we're able to collect all the stormwater into our collection system, route it through the pond in the northeast corner of the site that you see today. And then, it goes under one hundred and twenty-sixth Street to the north to the ditch. I think it's called Shoemaker Ditch up there to the north. So, we've taken a lot of those things into account, looked at those earlier than we otherwise might have.
Thank you. First read, moving on to item number twenty, one zero one one two one G. Consideration of a text amendment to the UDO to establish the nickel plate trail overlay. This is first reading, and we have Megan.
Yes, good evening. So, this item is a text amendment that is being initiated by the City of Fishers. And this is to establish the nickel plate trail overlay, which would only apply to single-family residential homes along the trail. So, I just wanna make that clear, this would only apply to single-family homes. Just to provide an overview, I know you guys were all given that nickel plate trail memo before council today. But just some of the tools that are in these residents that are along the trail, their toolbox have included the nickel plate trail master plan that was approved a couple of years ago. We offer a screening and privacy grant to residences along the trail, up to two thousand dollars for anyone who wants to put in screening or privacy improvements. And then, we also recently have allowed for any resident to request a trail connection that would be installed by our public works department. So, that is at the cost of the property owner, only two hundred dollars. And city's not making any money off of that. I think with anything, we're losing money potentially, but I'm trying to make it affordable to the residents. With that, we are, we've, you know, met with residences along the trails over the last couple of years, and I've personally been out to several of the properties. And really, what we've heard is a request for these residences to interact with the trail in a manner that they, they would like. So, some have wanted screening improvements, so additional landscaping, and they don't, they don't want any visibility from the trail. And then, others, they wanna interact and have those connections with the trail. And so, with this overlay, we are proposing only additional allowances. So, this isn't gonna further restrict any residential property. This is only gonna allow them to do more on their property. But we are proposing that each resident have an additional five hundred square feet of accessory structure floor area allocated to them. And that is to allow them, as you can see in this image, the ability to put improvements such as sheds or pergolas on their lot over what they would typically be allowed. With that, we're also proposing fifty percent impervious surface coverage with additional accessory square footage is additional impervious surface coverage. And so, we will go up to, are proposing to go up to fifty percent for that. And we've run that by our stormwater team. Because these properties are along the trail, all the drainage will flow into the drainage ditch along the trail. And then, additionally, for those who are concerned about privacy, our current ordinance is a six-foot-tall fence. And so, there are some areas where the grade of the trail's a little bit higher. And so, we've heard a request for a higher fence allowance. And so, we are proposing an eight-foot-tall fence, but only for fences that incorporate architectural features. So, there's some concerns with long-term maintenance of eight-foot-tall fences. And so, as long as there's an architectural feature incorporated into the fence, and you can see in this image here, they have, like, lattice work and that pergola structure, those fences would be allowed to be up to eight feet tall. So, this is for first reading tonight. It would go to Plan Commission, and we're planning to notify all of the property owners along the trail of these additional allowances, but would appreciate any of your feedback tonight as well.
Do we have any comments or questions from the council?
I have a question. On the architectural features, are they gonna be uniform? Or can every resident pick what kind of feature they want? Or is it gonna be all, everyone has to have the same architectural design of their fence or whatever?
So, it would be per property. So, there wouldn't be any standard design. What one property owner wants is gonna differ from what another property owner wants. And so, having a uniform look may be some people's visual preference. But we've also heard that having different features along the trail really adds that trail experience as a trail user, having kind of a different look and can add a little bit of interest to the trail experience.
So, you, you think that's okay? I just wonder, you know, from an aesthetic standpoint, when it's all said and done, you know, how that's gonna look like. So, I'm deferring to you, your, your department to kind of figure that out, I guess, but.
Yeah, that's a good point. Maybe we can incorporate some additional images of what architectural features we would allow and, and kind of limit those, because leaving it open-ended, you're, you're correct. We could get some architectural features we don't want.
I was gonna ask the same thing, but from a different perspective, because the residents that I've met with, and I know that you and I've had similar meetings with some combined, every now and then, the trail is a lot higher than the residence backyard. So, when we do the eight-foot fence, is there a requirement that the architectural feature needs to be a certain, because just the lattice there is a certain depth. But could it be solid, and something happened architecturally, is that, is that allowed? The way that you've written it, is it something that?
So, the way it's written, as of right now, is it would be six-foot tall. And then, if they want an additional two feet, that two feet would have to be the architectural feature.
Okay, but does the architectural have to be something? I know that this is just one example, but are there, is there an ability for it to be solid, but have a, maybe a look or a change or some, some angle or something like that?
Yeah, we can look at-
I'm not asking very well, but I'm just, I know that some residents, they've got the trail at a certain elevation.
Yeah, we can look at, with, same as Cecilia's comment, maybe some solid architectural features and incorporate those in. But as of today, it would be allowed, as long as it would be considered an architectural feature.
Okay, and it's not every lot, but there are some that it's quite a bit of a difference from the backyard?
Yes, and I will say, on those res, we've been working with specific neighborhoods where the grade difference is significant. And we are a little bit limited in what we can put in the trail right-of-way itself, because there's a Duke Eastman along that trail. But we've been working with those specific neighborhoods to address their concerns with, with the elevation and trying to accommodate as much as we can the screening.
Okay, thanks.
That was my question, too, about when that elevation's really high like that. Thank you for listening and addressing the concerns of these residents.
Of course.
May, I think what also would be helpful is, I don't know, to provide an over, a picture of the overlay, like, maybe just take one neighborhood or one stretch where we could visually see what this is. I'm, it's just hard to kind of visualize the look. And again, I'm just worried about aesthetically, you know, how this would look once it's all said and done. And just to make sure we're, at the end of the day, it's an enhancement overall of just the homes and the trail and that it's a, you know, a top-notch, you know, addition to what, to what's being done there.
Certainly. And what we can do is we can provide images of existing properties that have utilized the screening grant, just to give you guys some idea of what's currently been done. And then, we've been working with residents who have plans for improvements such as what's shown here. And so, we can share those plans with you to, to give you a better idea of maybe what's been done and what intends to be done along the trail.
Okay, thank you.
On first reading.
Much to that first reading, I'll move on to item number twenty-one, one zero one one two one H. A consideration of a text amendment to various sections of the UDO. And we have Megan again.
Yes, so this is another first reading tonight for a text amendment to the city's Unified Development Ordinance. This is really a cleanup item specifically as it relates to our sign ordinance. So, if you, for those of you who might remember, a couple of years ago, we did a cleanup to our sign ordinance to address state statute and federal statute requirements, specifically as they relate to sign content. And so, we are cleaning up the language of that sign ordinance again. And so, this does include various updates to the UDO. Same with the nickel plate trail overlay, this will go to Plan Commission for a public hearing next month, and then, we'll be back before you after Plan Commission's recommendation for final approval.
On first reading.
First reading. Okay, moving on, given that we have no new business, I'm moving on to community comment. Any member of the public wishing to speak may come forward. Please state your name and address for the record. You will be given three minutes to speak.
Good evening, my name's Carol Wills. I'm at seventy-two sixteen Pine Brook Circle in River Glen. And I just wanna start out by saying I do appreciate the comments from Deputy Mayor Holcomb and also our council member tonight with regards to the planning on the pickleball, pickleball courts in River Glen. However, myself and my neighbors have a great deal of concern. There was an article in the Current Magazine on September twenty-eighth that quoted our mayor when he was asked about the 2022 budget. And he was quoted as saying that we would be constructing pickleball courts at River Glen. So, he had specifically said that in the article. And we've had additional detailed emails and conversations with Sarah Sanquist, the Director of Parks and Rec, in which she cited also specific plans around pickleball courts at River Glen. So, we've got a, a great deal of concern for a variety of reasons. One of them is there's been much documentation and recommendation around the noise that comes from pickleball courts, that any resident should be five hundred to six hundred feet from the courts. And there is a string of about four or five houses that are within thirty feet of the proposed courts. So, the noise level would definitely be obstructive. There's also only a one road for traffic going in and out of the River Glen Country Club that accommodates all of the golfers, deliveries, the pool, and would now have to take care of all the traffic from the pickleball players. So, we're concerned about the noise, we're concerned about lighting, we're concerned about traffic. And we're just asking that there's some serious consideration done for an alternate location, maybe comparable to Cynthia, where they're not so close to homes and residences. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Janet Dermody Bear. I live at seven four oh four Madden Drive, four six oh three eight. I spoke last time regarding the budget. I'm assuming it has not passed yet, but only was approved for second reading. I would like you to reconsider my suggestion about money towards a mortgage fund for people to be able to afford housing in Fishers. My concern is this. This is what came to my house. It's from an international investment fund. That's where housing is going these days. Single-family homes make more profit for investors than apartments do. So, there's a whole push on this, not just nationally, but internationally. And it's something we should be aware of, because what happens is that they don't keep up the properties. There are all kinds of little games that have been going on since two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine, when this type of investment became cool. And now, it has a profitability rate that is higher than other investments. We have danger of people coming in who have no interest other than the profit. And that's what I'm concerned about. I'm concerned that if we don't find a way to help our residents and our workers be able to work here, we will find ourselves with companies like this one renting it out without any guarantee for, for its sustainability, for its upkeep, or any of those kinds of things. So, that's why I would hope that you will reconsider, and if not for this budget, at least for a conversation to begin about how we provide the people who work here with the ability to buy a home here and make a life here in this lovely city. So, I do have some things to hand out that might be able to help a little bit about this.
I'm gonna go ahead and invite someone else up to talk. Okay, do we have anyone else? Thank you.
Hello, my name is Brian Nurse. I'm at one three eight eight zero Robinson Run up in Harrison Park. I'm just here for a quick request or favor. You guys probably know about the five G, and you probably used to involve the drama involved with that. In my neighborhood, we have about fifty houses, and I'm the lucky one where they put the five G tower. We were supposed to have a meeting on September sixteenth, and the day before that meeting, I got an email from McKenzie Pool saying the meeting's been canceled and then changed to October twelfth, tomorrow. And then, Monday, I got another email from McKenzie saying the meeting has been canceled and been changed to October eleventh, which is supposed to happen this morning. And then, Wednesday, I got another email from McKenzie Pool saying they've canceled that meeting, and now, it's been moved to November fourth. I assume all these change in meetings have been at the request of Verizon? So, I now have a scheduling conflict for November fourth. And I've asked McKenzie if what I need to do, what process I can petition to have the meeting changed, and I've gotten nothing back. And so, I assume that means go pound sand. So, I'm coming before you to see if anybody here can put any pressure on McKenzie Pool to have the meeting changed for November fourth.
Sir, I'm, I'm happy to talk with you about that afterwards. I don't think the message from the city is to go pound sand. Verizon, as the petitioner to these, frequently moves the dates in which they submit, and we try to balance and work with residents with it. So, after this, I'll be happy to meet with you and talk to you.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, if I could just add a little bit, I, I'm, I have a neighborhood in, in my subdivision. I live in Windermere. We've been moved twice as well, and we're, we're moving forward. And I will be at that meeting myself to represent my community.
Yeah, I'm the only one in the whole neighborhood who's gonna get the tower, so I'd like to have a chance, at least.
Yeah, absolutely.
Do we have anyone else wishing to speak?
Good evening, my name is Dana Colbert, one two one eight seven Windsor South Drive. I am just here to thank you for having the discussion on item thirteen earlier about the boards and commissions and how that process will be codified. I appreciate you having that conversation publicly. And I also do want to reiterate my comments from the last meeting, which were more focused at that time on diversity, but they do also allow for additional transparency. To reiterate that, that is performing a formal, complete audit of the boards and commissions, specifically with any demographic area, demographic information that has been voluntarily supplied. Having a social media outreach for those boards and commissions appointments, so that you can find out as well of people who are interested in applying. Reviewing the applications that have been submitted in the past two years and going through, especially as Counselor Newman pointed out, some people have applied and had not heard anything. Forming a nominating committee, taking that back to the task force and having that as a potential solution to what has been proposed. And then, as you have been doing, making sure that those are codified. So, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else for sitting to speak?
Good evening. My name is Ron Rice. I'm a resident of the Brooks Chase Complex located at hundred and thirty-first and Brooks School Road. I've been a resident here in Fishers for about seventeen years. I grew up in Indianapolis. I moved here because of my work. I retired from the Indiana Department of Correction, thirty-three years. My question is, has any thought been given by the city and by the council with regard to the rescue funds, money that's been allotted by the federal government? Has any thought been given to that? And if there are certain areas the council and the city's looking at that would benefit from this funding? I have a couple of suggestions. One would be reintegration program- One would be reintegration programs for offenders, low-level offenders, that may have been incarcerated in jail, in the county jail, or on probation, not really hardcore offenders. People that have problems adjusting to the community and might need job skills, that's one suggestion. Another one is, since I've been here, I've not seen a lot of senior citizens in communities or recreational centers. There may be some around, but I'm not familiar with it. Has any thought been given to that? There are a lot of senior citizens here in Fishers. Fishers is a growing town. It's a very enterprising town, and I think Fishers could benefit by expanding senior citizen recreational centers. The last thing I would suggest is, since Fishers is growing so well and so big and enterprising, you're having, you're drawing a more diverse community. Has any thought been given to setting up pantries, for expanding pantries for people that may be in need? Now, Fishers is a well-to-do community, but I think it's worthy of having some thought given to that. You're growing, and you're going to have more people that may be in need. So just a few thoughts that I share with the council. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing.
Thank you for your comments. I just wanted to give you a few resources that we have here. The Hamilton County Jail does have a program for inmates that is job training, connecting them to available jobs that are in the community, so they do have that in place. We're working on a recreational center, and I know that there, there has been a lot of seniors in our community that are looking for more activities and things, and so hopefully with, with a new center coming in, we will have more programs with regard, you know, to that. And what was the last thing?
The pantry.
The food pantry, yes, yes. The trustees' offices, you know, a lot of people don't realize that we have two trustees' offices, the Delaware Township trustee and the Fall Creek Township trustees, and they work with our own community, with helping with, to pay a utility with a crisis, with food pantries, and also our local churches are very much, also very involved. And so we, we do have the resources here. I'm not sure where the disconnect is, but we, we appreciate your comments.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing none, I'm going to close the community comment section.
Make a motion to adjourn.
I have a motion to adjourn? Do I have a second?
Uh-huh.
Meeting adjourned.